Okay, it is 7:01. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Protem Martin.
Here.
Mayor Vatalos.
Here. And now, I'm going to lead the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For anyone in the audience that may be attending with interest the appeal of the Planning Commission decision regarding the Merrimott rent increase, which is item nine on the agenda, the appellant has withdrawn the appeal. So if you're here for that, you don't need to stay. And now, I'm going to read a proclamation for Fire Prevention Month. Wow, this is a long one. Yeah. Okay, and I'm going to read the proclamation. I just needed glasses. Declaring October 2019 as Fire Prevention Month in the city of Pacifica, whereas the city of Pacifica and the North County Fire Authority is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Pacifica, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed 2,630 people in the United States in 2017, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 357,000 home fires, and whereas the majority of U.S. fire deaths, four out of five, occur at home each year, and the fire death rate per 1,000 home fires reported to the U.S. fire departments was 4% higher in 2017 than in 1980, and whereas when smoke alarms sound, Pacifica residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety, and whereas Pacifica residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas Pacifica residents should make a home escape plan, drawing a map of each level of the home, showing all doors and windows, and Pacifica residents should practice the home fire escape plan with everyone in the household, including visitors, at least twice a year during the day and at night, and whereas Pacifica residents should teach children to escape on their own in case adults can't help them, and whereas Pacifica residents should make sure everyone in the home knows how to call 911, or the local emergency number from a cellphone, or a neighbor's phone, and whereas Pacifica residents should practice using different ways out, and whereas Pacifica residents, in a real emergency, should get low and go under smoke to get out quickly and stay out and never go back inside the home for people, pets, or things, and whereas Pacifica residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2019 fire prevention theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape," Plan and Practice Your Escape, effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from the fire. Therefore, I sue Vatalos, Mayor of Pacifica, to hereby proclaim October 2019 as Fire Prevention Month throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Pacifica to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the North County Fire Authority and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Month 2019, done this 14th day of October 2019. And we have Clyde Preston.
Madam Mayor, and members of the council, thank you very much for proclaiming Fire Prevention Month here in the city of Pacifica, and thank you for also reinforcing this year's NFPA theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape, Plan and Practice Your Escape." And that's definitely the message that we have taken out to our children here in Pacifica. This month, our firefighters have visited every elementary school in the city of Pacifica, promoting that theme, and of course, all of our other fire safety messages about exit drills in the home and smoke alarms and things of that nature. And actually, this past Saturday, we had an excellent turnout at Fire Station 72, our Lindemar Fire Station, we had our annual Fire Service Day open houses, and from the count of the number of little plastic fire hots we gave out and hot dogs to everybody, we had almost 500 people attend that event this year. So it was a phenomenal turnout, great for the family, and a great way to get our fire safety messages across to our community. So again, on behalf of the entire North County Fire Authority, I'd like to thank you for promoting Fire Prevention Month here in the city of Pacifica. Thank you.
A good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. It was nice meeting you. And I just really wanted to thank you all for your quick response to the fire that happened in Brisbane. We're very lucky that you guys acted so quickly, and just thank you. I appreciate you.
Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Hi Clyde, thanks so much for all your hard work and your advocacy. Make that 504, because we didn't take our hats this year. We've got several years' worth of hats, and it was so much fun. We got to see the Jaws of Life, we got to see rappelling down, we got to see a dollhouse set on fire, was that what that was?
I think it was the exploding house.
Yes, yes. An exploding house, and it was great. Thank you so much, and it really does hit home for a lot of us locals, especially given the past few weeks and what we're seeing happen down in Southern California this year and previous years up here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. I was out of town this weekend, so I couldn't come, but thank you. I was down near Simi Valley, and I know there was a big worry about a fire coming over from Los Angeles County there, so thank you.
Thank you.
I came to the open house toward the end and really enjoyed seeing all the kids. Last week, you were, Fire Company was out at my school, Carrillo School where I work, and it was really very educational for the kids because they got a call in the middle of the visit. So, thanks a lot for making all of that information available to the community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And I also attended on Saturday, and it was amazing. The kids had so much fun, especially when they got to use the fire hose and knockover cones, which I thought that would have been fun too, but I didn't do it.
We let adults do it too, so we'll get you next year.
There were a lot of little kids waiting, so it was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And want to go up?
Yeah, we'll take a picture with you.
Thank you, Clyde. Thank you very much. Okay, and we're moving to consent. We have items one, three, and four pulled by the public, and would anyone on council like to pull anything else?
I had some questions on five. Yeah, number five, so.
Okay, so will someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of one, three, four, and five.
I'm just having questions.
Okay, do you want to ask your question?
Do you want me to just ask?
Ask the question, please.
Question in terms of, I know you were reaching, they were looking at a computer database to try to get some sort of CRM management, you know, customer relations management software. So does this program meet that if someone calls a second time, you can report it's been sent to Public Works or whatever, so that they can get the status? And I also, in reading the staff report, I see you will be able to have a history if, you know, 1234 Palmetto keeps coming up, that there might be an issue. So, I just want to be sure this is a step towards, or does this meet the need for customer relation software?
Right. Thank you, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. So this software and process is for the work order management, and I think, so it's not a CRM, customer relations management system, but I think the key aspect of that, and I'll turn to our Public Works representatives, is whether the capabilities of it could be utilized or referenced in a future CRM system. And when we explore in the future a CRM system, we would, you know, look for that connectivity as well.
Right, because it would be nice if we could get some sort of 3-1-1 system, obviously on a smaller scale than what bigger cities have, but...
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, Sam Bautista, your Deputy Director of Public Works. The question of having our work order system work with a CRM, that is possible. It's just, it's databases that are going to be tied in with each other, so, but right now, the work order system is used to track any kind of work requests that come in. If a person calls the city, we can put that into our system, and then we could track the work and dispatch it to our crew. So, that's how it's going to work for now, but in the future, it could work towards, you know, our long-term goal of having a CRM integrated with the work order system.
So this technology will be able to interface with the CRM management at some point?
Right, and then it'll also tie into GIS.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That was my own question.
Thank you. So would you like to change that motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion, or revise my motion, to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items one, three, and four.
Second.
Please vote. And that passes five to zero. So we'll go to item number one, which is approval of dispersments from 9/119 through 9/1519. And Bridget Duffy?
Hi, Bridget Duffy. I just want to say on the record and on behalf of the people, there is a climate crisis, and there is a climate emergency happening. Our county has declared that to be a real fact, and in that light, it is my opinion, and it is the opinion of many people, that all of our energies and focus should be going towards making sure all of our money is going in the right place. So, I'm saying this as you're dispersing money, not that it's going to change anything, but I will be back, and I think that the people right now in this country are starting to pay attention, and starting to realize that all of our tax money is essentially going into the pockets of a handful of people, making a handful of people very wealthy, and the rest of us being screwed over in no uncertain terms. And it absolutely has to end, and the dispersments should always be, I think there should be a People's Assembly made up of about 200 or 300 citizens from this city, watching over all the spending. That is a no-brainer at this point, when we need all our resources to try to dig ourselves out of a world that is running right now on fossil fuels, and we know we have to switch that over in about a short few years. That's a huge dilemma. It's going to take all of our money and all of our resources, and I say it's about time we get started. And business as usual has created the climate crisis, so to continue business as usual at this juncture, as a government agency, as a city, is, in my opinion, pure outright inhumanity, and causing the destruction to the planet that we see. So, have a nice night.
Thank you. Any comments from council? We'll bring it back to council.
Did that cover one, two, and three?
No.
Comments? Oh, there's others for the other ones? Okay.
There's a comment for three.
Okay.
So, no, we need to take four individually, so I figured we'd do each one of them individually.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I move we approve the approval, item number one, consent, approval of dispersment.
I second.
Please vote. And that passes five to nothing. Number, item number three, Bridget Duffy?
That worked out nicely. Anyway, as I was saying, climate emergency. So this one is about approving this situation on the beach, which I happen to know is sort of a disguise for trying to create a situation where we're going to build a wall. Now, the situation in Pacifica is not a threat, a flood. County, look at, anybody can see this map. You can see that on the other side of the hill, they're going to be looking at building walls to protect themselves. On this side of the hill, we have 12 feet of erosion every year for the last five years. We're looking at an erosion problem. That, a wall is not going to do anything for an erosion problem. The truth is, we don't know what is about to happen with that ocean, and building anywhere around that ocean right now is foolhardy. And it's not only foolhardy, but it adds to the destruction of the planet and the species that are dying every day in this mass extinction. I don't know if anybody's heard about it, but there's a sixth mass extinction, and it's being caused by our activity, by the plastics that we use and we buy every day, by the ton, that are being shipped overseas using carbon, shipped to another place using more carbon, to places in Malaysia who have no, anyway, that's a different story, obviously. It's the garbage issue, and, but what I'm saying is, when we participate in these construction projects that build things that we know are going to have to get torn down, this is a waste of money. I'm not saying we shouldn't build things, and I think that is the big bugaboo. There is a contingent of people in Pacifica that have an idea of how they want to make their money. They want to build things, and they want to, they want their investments to pay off, and all I'm saying is, is if we could at least have a hearing on some of these, an open town hall meeting, where we can get some real facts out to the public and to you guys, we can all be prosperous here in Pacifica. We could build stuff, stuff that needs to be built right now, to transition into a green future. Or, we could keep doing what we've been doing, and some people can keep making money, and most people can keep getting screwed. Those are our choices.
Thank you. Item number three, someone make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve, item number three.
I second.
Please vote. And that passes five to nothing. Item number four, Tiger.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am Tiger Jazz Twirl, Big Stick of Pacifica. I have no opinion. I thought it might be a good idea, for the sake of the public who might be watching, who maybe don't know what this is, just to maybe briefly have staff give a synopsis. We know about the emergency thing that keeps being re-edified along the coast, but this one is apparently brand-new, and I read the report to see what it is, but not everybody knows where to look for a report or necessarily has the time, so I'm just suggesting you do a quick staff thing. Thank you.
Okay. Louis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and City Council members. My name is Louis Sun, Deputy Director of Public Works for Wastewater. So the emergency at Hickey Boulevard is caused by a third-party contractor that was doing underground communication conduit project. They were installing conduits using the jack-and-bore method, and unfortunately, they damaged our sewer line in multiple places. We discovered this, actually, on the day of Fog Fest, when we got an emergency call. We went up and investigated, and that day, we dug down, and we discovered that on all the places that was damaged, the flow, the sewer flow, created a large cavity in all these multiple places, and undermining the streets. So it was apparent to us that we need to act fast and fix the sewer line, and also repair these cavities. We didn't want to have a sinkhole situation that would happen on Hickey Road. So, so this is what happened, and this is an emergency that was declared.
Thank you. And no one else from the audience, so I'll bring it back to council. Any questions?
I move we approve item four, the consent calendar.
I second.
Please vote. And that passes five to zero. And so the consent calendar is now completed. We'll move on to oral communications. I have three cards on oral communications. Jerry Crowe, Deidra Crowe, and Bridget Duffy.
Could you please switch?
You may switch.
Good evening. My name is Deidra Crowe, and I've called Pacifica my hometown since 1954. I've come before you several times to give you an update on the Ocean Shore Row, CAR 1409. We're about to move the car from the Clara Creek Wastewater Recycling Plant over to 164 Rena Del Mar, and we're excited about doing that. We're taking bids now on grading the lot to make it level, and then we're going to put an attractive fence and a secured gate around it. So, we'll proceed then to complete the car. This is monumental, and we've so appreciated the help from Kevin Woodhouse and the council and everyone involved. It's been a long journey, but we're about to begin. I would like to ask the council to refund our $1,000 fee. That's an awful lot of rummage, and we'd sure appreciate that money back. That will help us complete the car. And I'll be back again soon to give you a further update once that's done. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Jerry Crowe, followed by Bridget Duffy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of city staff. Jerry Crowe from Serena Drive. I'm just here to reinforce the idea that when the long-promised completion of CAR 1409 is done, it will be a real asset to the city. It will help to make, it will be set up as a museum of coastal railroading, and we believe it will be a strong attraction for visitors. The programs that we put on that are on the theme of railroading always bring out our biggest attendance, so we're looking forward to something that will be a real tangible asset to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, again. I don't know how to do this. I'm going to find out how to do this, but I figured I might as well just put it out there and put it in writing, because I know that democracy works kind of like this. I'm a citizen, and actually, not just a citizen, I ran for office. I got 5,000 votes once and 3,000 votes the other time, so when I speak, it literally is not just me here. It is many, many people, thousands of people in fact, in Pacifica, who heard my ideas and thought, yes, these are things that we need to be doing, and they voted for me. So it's not just me speaking, it's a constituency here in Pacifica, which feels very strongly about the planet and very strongly about people. And we are coming up into another winter, and we have people living outdoors, people who work full-time, people who pay taxes, people who grew up in Pacifica, who graduated from Terranova High School, who were football stars, veterans, all kinds of Pacificans, they're living out in the street. It's unnecessary? Absolutely. The state of California has given cities permission to use their public lands for affordable housing. We have a company right here in Pacifica called Tiny Homes of Pacifica, who could build a nice little home that I wouldn't mind living in, and I don't think anybody else would either, for $40,000. For a very, very small investment, the city of Pacifica could set up many small housing communities where we are running it as public housing, and we are getting the benefit of it. Now, we have a problem with the pensions and our, you know, we're not making enough revenue. Everybody else in Pacifica is in landlord heaven. Why isn't Pacifica in landlord heaven? Even charging a reasonable amount of money on tiny homes which are on city-owned land would be enormously profitable for Pacifica. So I would like to request an formal public hearing, exploring the idea of erecting at least one test tiny home community that is built on city-owned land. It would be a small investment, it would be worth finding out if we could get some people back into homes, and still make a profit from it, and not even put anybody out of their situation. So I think it's worth exploring. Also, my newsletters are in here, one for each of the council members. They look alike when you first see them, but they're, it's, you know, a work in progress. I kind of look at these as first drafts, but I feel like at least there's some information. I call them informative coloring sheets, and I'm really encouraging people to pass it around their friends, family, a book club, whatever. Pass it around, everybody color a little piece of it, and you all see- It's worth Googling a few things to see, am I completely off the wall? Or is erosion our biggest problem in Pacifica? Find it out. Google it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Bridget. Okay. That brings us back to council communications. Who wants to start?
Yeah, sure, I'll start. Thanks again to the Fire Station 72, who put on a wonderful fire event for the, fun for the whole family. It was great. Congrats on a great Fog Fest, the Fog Fest Committee. I don't think we've been here as a regular council meeting since Fog Fest, but it was wonderful. We had pretty good weather the first day and excellent weather the second day. I wanted to say congrats to everyone. I attended the Climate Ready San Mateo County Collaborative, and we went over the health effects of all of our changing environment. And it's pretty mind-blowing. Each of these collaboratives, we study something different, things like fires, sea level rise, rising temperatures. And this one was about the health effects of all of those. And you can find more information about it at Climate Ready San Mateo. The Office of Sustainability puts it on, and you're also welcome to attend, too. Congratulations to the Pacific Beach Coalition for a great coastal cleanup day. Had over 500 volunteers, and they collected 10,000 cigarette butts, which is good and bad. At the same time, they had 12,800 cigarette butts handed in for the butt blitz, which happened the month prior to Coastal Cleanup Day. San Mateo County ran that. So congratulations to all those folks who attended and not only attended, but worked so hard to plan it. 1,100 pounds of trash, 370 pounds of recycle. We also had an awesome cleanup this weekend at the, right here at Sharp Park, second Saturday of every month where we run the Sharp Park Cleanup. We had over 60 volunteers. Some families came from Sacramento. And they're like, oh, we just love to come to the beach and we love your cleanup, so we drive down once a month. And I just think that's amazing. And we had, the beach was really clean, which was great. We cleaned up the parking lots, picked up a ton of cigarette butts. And, you know, the Pacifica beaches have been technically smoke-free for a while now, but now the state has just passed a ban on smoking. So you're free to educate people on that. The enforcement's going to be difficult, but feel free to educate people. I think, you know, I think most people understand and would be okay with hearing something like that. That's all I have.
Okay, I'll go ahead and go.
Okay, go.
Yeah, thanks. Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming out here tonight. We really appreciate it when you show up and you're civically engaged. It's really important. I also went to the Fog Fest. It was, I was so proud to march in the parade with the Beach Coalition. And so that was really fun. It felt really good. I was at Coastal Cleanup as well. Let's see. We all were there for the committee and commission interviews, so we're looking forward to seeing who gets appointed to our committees and commissions. I went to the EQ Basin Community Meeting, where people from Lower Lindemar came out to, and rightfully so, expressed their concerns about the streets and the damage that was done through the project in the EQ Basin. And so there were a lot of community members there. People are very upset about what has happened to their streets, and it's really understandable that they are. But I just really wanted to commend Louis Sun, who's a Deputy Director of Wastewater. Is that the right title? Did I give him the right title, Kevin? Okay. I just really wanted to commend him because he was there and he was, he was so kind and patient, and he was full of information for these people who were not very happy. And I think we're just really lucky to have staff members on board that can treat our community in such a great way. So thank you so much for that. I wanted to just take a minute, oh, and I attended the high school fair, which was awesome. So thanks to Park Beach and Rec for putting on the high school fair every year. There were so many young people that came in and got to take a look at all the different high schools in the area. It's a great event, so thank you for that. I wanted to take a minute to offer my condolences to the family and friends of Karen Sinclair. She was a woman who was tragically killed in an accident about a week and a half ago here, right on Palmetto. It involved her family's motorhome. And I am saying this because I had a reaction to the press release that was put out, no fault to the author of the press release. But in the press release, it described these folks, our community members, as transients. And it was really hard for me to take that because these were people, part of my community, people that I've known for years, that are just really trying, you know, to live here in our city. So I want to thank our city manager and our chief of police for responding to me so quickly and compassionately, because I think it's time for all of us to really look at this epidemic in our region, right? We're in a housing crisis. And so we have to really look at how we are describing our community and how we have compassion and caring and how we express that in our language. So it's really important that we do that. So again, I want to thank our city staff for responding to me so quickly, and I just want to send condolences to their families. Thanks.
Let's see. I also was at the Lower Lindemar meeting there with Mary, and I was, all of us were at the LCP meeting on the 30th. Sue Beckmeyer and I attended the North County Fire Authority meeting, and we had a, it was to respond to the grand jury report. And we were doing everything, but they still need the board to approve the response to them. I also attended the meeting for Commute.org, and we're going to be putting the plans together to try to do a five-year plan with Commute.org, which we're a member of, JPA. And then I went to everybody's, matter of fact, I had to leave the Lindemar meeting early in order to go to, everybody knows my favorite meeting, the Airport Roundtable. And they are now starting the process to develop a method that a city could actually get some additional meters. In all likelihood, the city would have to pay 30,000 to 40,000. These are just estimates now. This is not the actual program. Pay 30,000 to 40,000 to get additional meters and possibly even if we wanted to move the existing meter we have to a different location. Even though the flight patterns have changed, they might want to keep, they want to keep it where it's been for 50 years, even though the planes don't fly there anymore. The old meters are no longer any good, so we can't, they cannot be used or repurposed. And they are, they finished the runway, which was causing a lot of problems for, the maintenance of the runway, which is causing a lot more problems for the arrivals than departures. Let's see, we are in meetings to develop a game plan with Santa Cruz, San Jose Airport Roundtable, and the Oakland Roundtable to try to speak as a, although all our congresspeople are on board on our side, we're trying to see if we can maybe get a little bit more clout to get things changed there. So that's pretty much the report from the Roundtable.
Yes, several items that I'd attended have been mentioned already, but I did want to say that all of the folks here spent four hours, three and a half to four hours interviewing those committee and commission folks. I think it was about 10 people. I can't really remember. I don't have my packet with me. But when you think of the hours that are spent on behalf of the city, I'm really encouraged that there were as many people turning out as there were to volunteer their time and be considered for spots on the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission, the Economic Development Committee, the Emergency Preparedness Committee, and Library Advisory Committee. And these are all really important functions. So I'm impressed with that. It's not the 200 to 300 folks that were called for an earlier public comment this evening, but it is a start, and I'm really grateful. We did have a difficult meeting. It was very challenging for the folks who have had their properties damaged as a result of our EQ Basin project. But I am really encouraged by the fact that the city is standing behind repairs and has a path and a process for people to file a claim and is working diligently to make sure that that road, that street balboa, and any other damages that were done are going to be repaired. So the continued patience of the community is very much appreciated. It's been a long haul, and it will be another year. So. Regular committee meetings this month, the Beautification Advisory Committee, there's still time to get an application in, a nomination for the mayor's beautification awards. That's for either commercial space or a home where the landscaping is particularly eye-catching and attractive, and you would like to nominate them. The deadline for that is the 16th. Information on the city's website. And the Economic Development Meeting was canceled, and we look forward to meeting next month. Library Advisory Committee Meeting, we had a really great update on all that's been going on in reaching out to the community and informing about the new library project for the Sanchez and Sharp Park Library.
Thank you. I went to, separate from the city, but a California Association of Realtors meeting on coastal issues and how to talk to California Coastal Commission. It was quite interesting. They hired a consultant for all of the coastal cities to try to talk to the Coastal Commission about our coastal issues. I was in the Fog Fest Parade, and a really nice young woman rode in the car with me. She won a raffle to be, to ride in the car with the mayor. And I thought, oh, she is going to be so bored. And she had so much fun, she wanted to go back and do it again, right then and there. So that was quite fun. Last Wednesday was Clean Air Day, October 2nd. Unfortunately, they gave a proclamation too late to present before Clean Air Day, but we do our part always for clean air. I went to the EQ Basin also, and everybody said everything about that. Fire Service Day was amazing, and I stayed there quite a bit longer than I expected, not having any children with me. I quite enjoyed it. I also went to the North Coast County Water 75th Anniversary yesterday. That was fun, too. They had a dunk tank, and they also provided succulents and water buckets for people to put in their showers so that you could use this water over again. And that was quite a fun event. I went to the City and County Association of Governments Meeting, and I'm going to give you some information, because this is regarding our regional housing needs determination assessment. And we've had numbers in the past. Our number in the past was 413 homes, and we built approximately 37. The new regional numbers are going to come out for 2023 to 2031, and they are expecting the numbers to be 50 to 200% higher, based on other communities in the state who've already been given their numbers. There have been in the past no teeth to the numbers, but they are saying that this time, when they give us our allotments, they could either take away federal funding, a lot of other items related to not making our numbers. There, hopefully, we'll be able to help them with the, sorry, the land use, because we need to give them our land use so that we can move forward. And if they take into consideration our zoning, and that's very important. One of the things that we discussed was doing a share and doing trades with other cities. For example, Brisbane in the future will have 2,000 new homes, which will far exceed their Rena allocation numbers. And we were talking about whether we shared and did sub-region where we put all the numbers together. C-KAG decided not to do that, but to cooperate with each other with the numbers, because, like Brisbane. But Brisbane, that may, it takes so long to develop such a large project that it may be outside of the years that we have, which ends in 2031. So there's a lot of questions up in the air now about that. So, let's see. And like I said, they will take into consideration our general plan and the rezoning, and it is urgent. They have hired, they've allowed 21 elements, which is a group of all 21 cities in our area and their housing departments, to have additional hours so that they can help everyone to try to meet their needs instead of doing the sub-regions. And hopefully, that will help everybody to come closer to their allocated numbers, because it's very difficult. So I hope that was sort of clear, but that was probably the most important thing I did in the past two weeks. Thank you. Staff Communications.
Thank you, Mayor Vadoas. Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I just have a couple brief announcements, communications. One is that I was able to spend most of all day Sunday at the Fog Fest, which was great and had many very positive interactions with folks coming by the city booth, asking questions about all sorts of different city projects, as well as spent some time down at the Fun Fest end of things, which was very well-attended, and just hundreds and hundreds of kids having a blast down at the Fun Fest. So that was a great day. I wanted to, I guess I would, I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce to you Deepa Sharma from Burke, Sorenson, Williams, filling in as city attorney, and Al Tong as well, from the same firm, in city attorney Kenyon's absence tonight. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
What I wanted to additionally comment on is, we have been pushing out information about, as council members have mentioned before in communications, about the Golden Gate National Recreation Areas Compendium, they call it, which is just a set of new revised, proposed, new revised regulations that the GGNRA superintendent is considering signing. And what we are promoting or advocating is that citizens, visitors, whomever in town who use the GGNRA areas, which is Maury Point and I have them here someplace, Malagra Ridge and the Sweeney Ridge, the three GGNRA areas, that those visitors to those areas for dog walking, biking, e-bikes, equestrian use, other public uses, that they take a look at these rules and regulations and provide comment to the GGNRA. The public comment period closes on October 28th. The city has submitted a letter requesting GGNRA consider an extension to that deadline, as well as considering further engagement with Pacifica residents. And in addition, requesting clarification on what rule changes they're recommending about dog usage. So I wanted to make sure to state that for the record, that that information, and we've been pushing that out through the weekly e-newsletter, Connect with Pacifica. And that completes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. On to the public hearings. And item number nine, staff will provide an update on the withdrawal of the appeal.
My name is Tina Waremeister. I'm the Planning Director. The update is pretty simple, actually very close to the agenda deadline when we were ready to push Publish. The Marymount representatives decided to withdraw their appeal. And so that's really all there is to report at this point.
Thank you. So on to item 10. So on to item 10, consideration of resolution next in order finding and determining that the public interest and necessity require the acquisition of certain property interests for public purposes and adopting resolution of necessity authorizing the acquisition of 330 Esplanade by eminent domain for the 310-330 Esplanade Infrastructure Preservation Project. And we'll have a staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Ryan Marquez, and with me I have Deputy Directors Sam Bautista and David Schreier from Cottonshire and Associates. The item before you tonight is to adopt a resolution of necessity authorizing the acquisition of 330 Esplanade by eminent domain for the 310-330 Esplanade Infrastructure Preservation Project. For you to better understand why this resolution is necessary, we've prepared a brief presentation. The presentation will start on the background of the project site, then detail the geology of the area, followed by a discussion on possible project alternatives and proposed project of today, and we will end by detailing the required findings for this resolution. Severe bluff erosion has been recorded over the past century in the area, and without intervention, city infrastructure and safety are at jeopardy. Two known attempts were made to stop the bluff erosion in the area. The first was a riprap revetment in 2009, and that was followed by a soil nail and shock crete wall in 2011. Both these attempts were unsuccessful, which ultimately led to the apartment buildings being condemned and demolished. It is now necessary to construct a bluff armoring structure to protect Esplanade Avenue and the utilities within Esplanade Avenue. At this point, I'd like to pass it over to David to talk about the geology of the area.
So the slide on, hi, Council, thank you very much for having me. The slide on the screen depicts different colored lines of where the bluff was at different periods in the last 70 years. You can see that in the past 70 years, the bluffs retreated approximately 200 feet, and that equates to about two and a half feet a year. In the last, since 2006 or so to 2017, it's retreated about 50 to 60 years, and that's equal to five feet per year. The geology of the bluff, the bluff consists of unseminated terrace materials that are very susceptible to wave erosion. As I mentioned before, in the last 75 years, at 330 Esplanade, there's been approximately two and a half feet per year of retreat. However, it's episodal. It's not unusual to have at least 10 feet of retreat in one year, and in fact, in 2016, the bluff retreated seven feet in that area. The bluff's very steep, and it's about 80 to 90 feet high in that location. The typical sequence of failure occurs by erosion at the toe, which undermines that portion of the bluff, causing failures, and then the failure works its way up to the mid and upper slopes. On the screen right now is a photo from 2002, and I direct you to see the land between the back of the apartment buildings at 330, 320, and 310 Esplanade, and where the top of the bluff is. We'll come back to that in a little bit. As I mentioned before, the typical failure is what they call calving, which is very similar to what happens with glaciers. On the screen right now is an example of that type of failure. It's localized, oversteepened at the toe, and then the failure works its way up. Back to that previous slide, now you're looking at a photo from 2019, January. You can see the apartment buildings that used to be at 310, 320, and 330 are now gone, but the building pads you can still see, and the land between the building pads and the top of the bluff that was there previously is now gone as well. Is that me? Okay. If unprotected, in the next six years, the bluff could retreat 20 to 30 feet, and if that occurs, there's a potential for Esplanade, as well buried utilities in Esplanade, to be at risk for the public's safety. Furthermore, violent ground shaking from an earthquake could trigger a massive bluff We considered, with the city, Public Works, several alternatives to stabilize the bluff face. One was grating the slope back to a more gentle 45 degrees. The problem is, is that the wave erosion at the toe would ultimately oversteepen that slope. We also considered sand replenishment, and this has been done in some communities, and we investigated this, but it was found to be unsustainable because of the cost, requires lots of money to keep trucking in sand. We also evaluated rock revetment, which has been successful on certain parts of the Pacific coastline. The problem is, at our site here, at the 310-330 Esplanade, there's no erosion-resistant rock near the ground surface. Furthermore, the Coastal Commission doesn't favor the rock revetment alternative. We also evaluated a no project, also known as a do-nothing approach, and if you do that, we know what happens, the bluff's going to continue to retreat at its present rate.
So the proposed project, as of today, can be seen on this slide. It includes a shockcrete wall that would go high enough to prevent wave overtopping and low enough to avoid undermining during sand migration. The wall would employ a tieback system to support the structure, as well as a sheet pile below the sand to prevent scouring. After the wall is installed, the bluff would be able to stabilize itself by reclining to a stable slope. While this is the design currently, at this point, during the regulatory agency approval, a lot can change aesthetically and possibly structurally with the wall. So state law requires that the City Council make certain findings with respect to the adoption of this resolution. You can see the four findings required bolded on this slide. The first finding is that public interest and necessity require this project. The finding was displayed tonight by showing you that there are erosional tendencies in the area that are endangering Esplanade Avenue, utilities, and infrastructure within Esplanade Avenue. The second finding is that the project is planned and located in a manner that is most compatible with greatest public good and least private injury. This finding was displayed through the analysis of the four project alternatives and shown to you in the current lot state. The third finding requires that the property is necessary for the project. This finding is displayed in the estimate that with the project being constructed on the property, is expected that there would only be 15 feet of lateral bluff remaining between the road and the edge of the bluff. The fourth and final finding that the city needs to find tonight is that there was an offer made per Government Code Section 7267.2A, and this was completed in November of last year. This concludes the staff presentation. Thank you for your time, and we'll take any questions.
Thank you. Questions from Council? We do have one card on this. Okay, we'll take the speaker from the audience, Bridget Duffy.
Hello. So, I'm just going to say, this is why people, this is why we need a People's Assembly, okay? We need a large group of people who are not dependent on whether they're liked by the Council or not, to be able to be on learning committees, research committees, researching all of our alternatives, and together, without any motivation of profit, decide what is the best way forward. That is what needs to happen right now. To have a small group of people making all the decisions about millions and millions of dollars, especially in regard to how we approach a climate emergency that affects our entire city, our entire city is on a coast, is absurd to have these decisions be in the hands of a small group of people with maybe one or two ideas batting around, none of them very good, by the way. Building a wall at the base of that bluff, all you're asking for is millions of dollars in order to bury millions of dollars' worth of concrete. That's what's happening. That bluff is eroding, it's been eroding. Do you really, honestly think you're going to stop it now, when we have ice caps melting, when we have rising seas? Now's the time that you think, after years and years of watching this bluff just fall into the ocean, all of a sudden, we think now, we're going to build a wall and stop it now, now with sea level rise becoming imminent. And it's happening now. That's why we're having an increased erosion problem, because the seas are getting more and more filled up with water. The ice caps are melting. Come on, people, I ain't making this stuff up. We all know this is true now. This is not me looking like a crazy person saying, the ice caps are melting. No, the ice caps are freaking melting. The sea is rising. A wall will do nothing, and this is exactly what I mean. Millions and millions and millions of dollars are going to be spent doing this, when we could actually be transforming that whole community into an experimental, off-the-grid, no-car, no-pipes, compostable toilets. Let's look at the endangered areas of our city as experimental. Let's do some things that are different. Let's transform them for the future.
Your time's up. Thank you.
I think we have to stop putting money into...
Your time is up. Thank you. Bridget, your time is up. You had plenty of time today. Thank you. Deirdre.
I have a lot to say.
Bring it back to Council, please.
Got it. I have a lot to say on stuff that's actually not part of this agenda, so I will not say it, because the only thing that we're discussing tonight is the recommended action, which is to accept the report and make a determination that conditions of a local emergency exist in order for us to do something about it, right? That's correct, right? And that something is eventually what? City Attorney?
You're hearing the resolution of necessity tonight, and you're supposed to make four findings, which would allow us to proceed with the condemnation process.
Okay. So, I used to live at 320 Esplanade. I actually came to Council when I was first around in 2007 or '08 and said, please protect my home, my apartment. And here I am, I'm sort of not really agreeing with that now, but the bluff had eroded so much in just one year that, and my dad came to visit, and he said, "Deirdre, I know you like living on the edge, but this is a little too close." You could feel the earth shake underneath, and I used to surf down there, and that was easy access. But times have changed, and unfortunately, we've got to do something about it. We've agreed to do what we can to protect our infrastructure and the folks that live there, too. I think that these conditions exist. I don't think there's any argument there. So if that is all we're discussing this evening, then I agree that those conditions exist. Interested to see if anyone comes along to try to help give us some money to do something interesting up above, and I'll just say that and leave it there, but thanks for your work on this, and I appreciate the presentation. It's very true and real.
Basically, the reason the city is taking over, or has in a motion to take over this property is because of the infrastructure. I mean, basically, and staff, please chime in, is if we were to let this bluff collapse, there would be raw sewage going into the ocean. We also would lose many, many units of housing, because they would not be able to have their utilities, either water going in, water coming out, electricity or anything, is that pretty much correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. That we would not have access for emergency vehicles to get in to help anybody, to evacuate anybody if there is another emergency there, or even to remove any of the debris that would happen, because the bluff might have collapsed, so we would not have access. So I do believe this meets that the public interest and necessity is met, and I would support this action. Does somebody want me to make a motion, or?
Mary, do you want to say anything?
Have another comment?
Well, yeah, I think I also was just a little confused when we started talking about the projects, and so I just want to make it very clear to the public tonight that we are not voting on any specific projects tonight. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think that was really important for me to understand that fully before making a decision, so thanks.
Okay, make a motion. Proposed action, the City Manager recommends the City Council open the hearing. Okay, I'm looking for that, and, oh, we don't have it here?
Take, yeah, take testimony. Close the meeting, close the hearing.
Close the hearing, okay, and then, I'm looking at the agenda, and I don't see any...
Proposed action, City Manager recommends, number 10.
Okay, that's the action, okay. City Manager recommends the City Council open the hearing on the resolution, take testimony, close the hearing, and adopt resolution next in order finding and determining that the public interest and necessity require the acquisition of certain property interests for public purposes and adopting resolution of necessity authorizing the acquisition of 330 Esplanade, assessors parcel number 009413030 by eminent domain for the 310-330 Esplanade Infrastructure Preservation Project.
Is there a second?
I second.
Please vote. And that passes five to nothing. Thank you all. Next, we have item number 11, public hearing on amending Chapter 15 of Title III of the Pacifica Municipal Code to Add Requirements of Federal Uniform Guidance Policies. And we'll have a staff report. There are going to be three items, which we are going to take all three items separately.
That is correct. Mayor Vatalos, members of the Pacifica City Council, Lorenzo Hines, Assistant City Manager. We have a public hearing on amending Chapter 15 of Title III of the Pacifica Municipal Code to Add the Requirements of the Federal Uniform Guidance Policies. Currently, state law governs purchasing by local government bodies and requires that every local agency adopt policies and procedures that govern their purchases. State law also requires, or provides that cities are authorized to accept federal grants for public works and various other projects. The city's municipal code provides that the city's purchasing functions shall be governed by an administrative purchasing policy, as well as language that sits in the municipal code. Our auditors, Mayes and Associates, at the end of their fiscal year 2017-18 noted that we did not, our purchasing policies, be they in city code or in the administrative policy, did not reflect the proper language for the federal uniform guidelines in two CFR sections, 200.317 through 200.326. Essentially, our municipal code and our administrative policies did not reflect federal procurement guidelines. And so this item before you represents our attempt to update both the administrative policy and update the city's municipal code to reflect those federal guidelines. And so what we're asking is that, and I'll read the three actions that need to be taken separately with three separate votes. The first action is that we find that... The first action is that we find that the action to amend administrative policy number 76, which is the purchasing policy I mentioned earlier, and introduction of ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica, amending Title III, Chapter 15, bidding procedures for public projects of the Pacifica Municipal Code to add Section 3-15.0, federal procurement is exempt from the provisions of SEQA under Sections 15061, because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility of these actions may have significant effect on the environment. The second action is move to adopt resolution amending administrative policy 76 to add Article 12, federal procurement and increasing supervisory purchasing limits and a minimum threshold for encumbering funds, end quotes. The third action is to introduce, waive the first reading, and read by title only the ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica, amending Pacifica Municipal Code Title III, Chapter 15, bidding procedures for public projects to add Section 3-15.10, federal procurement. Now, I'm going to back up just a little bit and speak to number two with a little more clarity. So, in addition to updating our administrative policy, and that's administrative policy number 76 to reflect the federal guidelines, we also increased the supervisory spending limits from 2,500 up to 5,000. Again, 2,500 up to 5,000. And we thought that that would provide more expediency for purchasing and expenditures. We also increased the minimum threshold for encumbering funds from 2,500 up to 5,000. And so, those are minor changes, but those changes are made to allow us to carry on business a little more expediently. And so, that concludes my report, and I'm open to questions.
Were there any implications of us not being up to par or sort of off-track over the past years?
No implications, but we've got a stern warning from the state to make sure that these policies are updated. So, if this hearing goes as staff recommends, I will be transmitting the results of these procedures to the state OES tomorrow.
Okay, and you said this is our attempt. Is there a possibility that it wouldn't fly, or you just meant an attempt with us?
This is our, this is our action to comply.
Okay, so this would get us in compliance?
Right.
Okay.
The language that you see in these, both the municipal code, municipal code has a reference to the admin policy, but the language that's in the admin policy was given to us, for the most part, by our auditors. And basically, here's what you need to put in your admin policy. And so, we put it in there. It was refined a little bit by the city attorney's office, but it is in there.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions? Like I said in the beginning, we need to have three separate motions here.
Do you want me to make a motion, recommended action?
Yes.
As the recommended action. Can I read, should I read it all, or can I just say as recommended?
Did we hold the public, did we open the public?
Oh, we do have to open a public hearing.
Sorry. We're opening the public hearing. I have no cards, that's why I didn't open the public hearing, but seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Thank you.
And I'll make a motion after I find out the answer to the question?
All right. If you could go one by one and read them off.
Just read them?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, I'll make a motion that we find that the action to amend administrative policy number 76, purchasing policy, and introduction of the ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica, amending Title III, Chapter 15, bidding procedures for public projects of the Pacifica Municipal Code to add Sections 3-15.10, federal procurement is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act under Sections 15061B, Section 3 of the SEQA guidelines, 14 Cal Code regs. What's that?
15,000.
What is ET, Etsec? Etsec? 15,000 Etsec, because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that these actions may have a significant effect on the environment. And move to adopt resolution amending...
Wait, no, we have to do one second.
We have to vote on that right now?
Yes.
Great.
So, a second?
Second.
And please vote. And that passes five to nothing. Now, on to number two.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move to adopt resolution amending administrative policy number 76, purchasing policy, to add Article 12, federal procurement, and increasing supervisory personnel purchasing limits and minimum threshold for encumbering funds, end quotes.
And second?
Second.
Thank you, please vote. And that passes five to zero. Number three?
And I'll make a motion to introduce, waive the first reading, and read by title only the ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica, amending Pacifica Municipal Code Title III, Chapter 15, bidding procedures for public projects to add Sections 3-15.10, federal procurement.
Second. And please vote. And that passes five to zero. On to council consideration, item 12.
What does that mean, Etsec?
It just means that there are multiple sections of the code that deal with the same subject matter.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 12 is Third Amendment to Consultant Services Agreement for Building Division, Staff Augmentation and Related Services Between the City of Pacifica and CSG Consultants Incorporated.
Thank you, mayor and council. My name's Tina Waremeister. I'm the planning director. And as the mayor stated, this is an item to authorize to extend the Building Division Services Contract with CSG Consultants. It's also an opportunity to provide an update to the city council regarding efforts to improve efficiency and customer service in the Building Division, which was brought up at the, last year, the last time this contract was due to be extended. So, in an effort to begin improving the processes in the Building Division over the last year, we have hired an additional permit tech to level the heavy workload previously on one individual. We initiated an online customer satisfaction survey. I interviewed business representatives and design professionals that have expressed frustration with the building permit process to better learn exactly what may be happening and going on behind the scenes. We have documented internal complaints and communicated with other departments and divisions about the permit process. And we've begun drafting a manual as a guide for the permit technicians and other staff. The results of this internal assessment have found process deficiencies in the division related to plan routing and information dissemination and coordination with other departments and agencies. So, many of these issues are internal and not necessarily related to the consultant. However, given all the other priorities in the planning department, it's been difficult to devote the necessary time needed to conduct a thorough assessment. So, therefore, as a next step, what we're recommending is another extension of this contract for a year, and during that time, we will contract with a consulting firm that specializes in assessing problems and identifying best practices. This is similar to what's been done in, I think, several other divisions and departments in the city in order to improve our processes and improve our customer service. So, with that, our recommendation, as I said, is to extend the contract with CSG for an additional year.
And does council have questions?
I just want to say, I was on the council when we brought this up, and I mentioned the issues, and I just wanted to thank staff for doing a thorough job in researching it and actually wanting to dig a deeper hole, so, thank you.
Seeing no other council questions, I'll open it for the public hearing. I have no yellow cards, and seeing no one coming forward from the audience, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for deliberation.
I think it's a good idea.
I talked to a contractor, and he said that he has had good results with CSG so far. So, just, I only talked to one person. Anyone else?
I guess. Move to approve a third amendment to the agreement to consultant services between the City of Pacifica and CSG Consultants, Inc., to extend the term of the agreement one year to October 31, 2020, and authorize compensation not to exceed $400,000 in fiscal year 1920 as reflected in the adopted citywide budget, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Amendment.
I'll second.
Please vote. And that passes five to zero, and that concludes our meeting, and I'd like to close the meeting in memory of Karen Sinclair, who passed away recently. Thank you.
[music]